Good evening, residents of Everett, Washington and interested parties. I'd like to call to order the Everett City Council meeting of September 10th, 2025. For information on council meetings and how to participate, please visit everettwa.gov/citycouncil. For the record, Council President Schwab is excused this evening. I'm facilitating on his behalf. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor Franklin.
Here.
Councilmember Bader.
Here.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Vogel.
Here.
Councilmember Fossey.
Excused.
Councilmember Tui.
Here.
President Schwab.
Excused.
Vice President Sarlenko.
Here. I'd like to ask Councilmember Tui to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to ask Councilmember Bader to read our land acknowledgement.
The city council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Stahoxia people and their successors, the Tuleleb tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you, and under old business, do I hear a motion for the approval of the minutes for our September 3rd meeting?
So move.
Second, the motion.
All right, clerk. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Sarlenko.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Franklin.
Good evening, council and community. Just a quick note that I need to leave early this evening, so we'll sadly miss our team's presentation on our Vision Zero project. But I did want to share how very important that work is that we've embarked on. Our goal is to reach zero deaths and serious injuries on our roads because everyone deserves to travel safely on our streets, sidewalks, and paths. And I am very proud of the work that the team has done to develop the strategies. I look forward to implementing them. It will take time and funding. But it's been great to bring additional insights and education through our participation in the Mayor's Innovation Project Pedestrian Cohort. Our team presented a couple of our pedestrian flashing beacon projects at key sites on Everett Avenue and Center Road, and they received great feedback about our team from the cohort and experts. They believe our team is really on the right track with these improvements and the new vision for the city. So I just wanted to compliment our team on that work. Also wanted to remind folks that applications are open for many boards and commissions. We need wonderful volunteers to sign up for these opportunities, and we especially need folks that are interested in our Charter Review Committee. This is a chance to review our city's constitution, and it only comes once every 10 years. So I encourage folks to look that up on our city website at everettwa.gov/boards and learn about all the board openings and please apply. And then it was great to celebrate the opening of the Kiwanis Park this last weekend, or this week, whenever it was. I really love the new playground. It's inclusive to all abilities and the really cool new interactive sports court. I really want to thank our parks team, but I also want to thank Councilmember Ryan for investing her ARPA dollars in that project and also County Councilmember Dunn. And then finally, I know everyone has noticed work being done on Broadway. As of last night, there are three nights of paving left in the schedule. Weather permitting, paving is planned to occur tonight and tomorrow. The work is, of course, weather dependent, so the schedule changes if it rains. There will be some utility adjustments done during the day with some lane closures this month, and striping will be done during nighttime closures in early October. The full closure of the Rotary was an inconvenience, but it's important to realize that doing so cut down the number of days that would be impacting the public, and we appreciate the public's patience with traffic control for this important project. The project team has worked hard to keep the community informed and minimize the impact, and we thank you for your patience. And I have no further comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. It's now time for public comment. That includes acknowledgement of written comments, and under our rules, written comments shall be considered in the same manner as oral comments. The persons submitting comments must provide their name and city of residence. Written comments require this to be made part of our official record. Angie, do we have written or public comments this evening?
Good evening, Vice President Sarlenko. We have no written comments, but we have one person online wishing to speak and one in chambers. So I'll start with online. And if John could turn on the camera and unmute, and when you're ready, state your full name, city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
John Peoples, Everett, Washington. Good evening, Everett City Council. I hope you are all well and remain so. Please join me in giving thanks to God for the life of Charlie Kirk, brave husband, father, family man, and co-founder of Turning Point USA, a charitable organization dedicated to encouraging America's youth to courageously and peacefully participate in the public square. Let us pray for many more brave young American men like him to live long lives and flood our nation with faith, family, children with their wives, courageous civil conversations, truth, and love. You were right last week to acknowledge Ukrainian Independence Day and the good people of the Ukraine in their fight against the rank injustice of an unprovoked foreign invasion. Today, I invite you to publicly say her name in mourning the death of Irina Zarutskaya at the hands of a deranged lunatic and repeat offender on a light rail train in North Carolina. This young Ukrainian refugee fled war in her homeland without a scratch, just to be murdered on camera by a man who was let out on the streets by our government in an act of profoundly misplaced sympathy for him and cruelty to her. As long as you acknowledge vague mistakes from the past, I invite you as government representatives to publicly acknowledge at least some responsibility for our government failing this particular Ukrainian refugee. I invite each and every one of you to engage in an adult indoor voice civil conversation on any topic. You know how to contact me. I encourage the city of Everett to honor Mr. Kirk in accordance with the order by the President of the United States to lower all flags to half staff from today through sunset this Sunday, September 14th. I would also wholeheartedly welcome Turning Point USA, Let Us Worship, and Students for Life to Everett. And thank you to the House of U.S. House of Representatives for the moment of silence in Mr. Kirk's honor this afternoon. For Caesar Rodney's horse, good night.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we'll move to chambers. So if Mrs. Byrd could please come to the podium. So if you could first start with hitting the button so we can hear you on there.
I'm Pralanda Hayes Byrd, and it's sad for me to see that my country is befriending and betraying me, taking care of other people, and I'm a citizen, while I'm being watched, being unhoused, and being abused by people that you're to me protecting and allowing to take over. I've been falsely arrested since last seeing all of you going to a place that I was safely parked at. So I try to write to everybody because I'm tired of talking to you guys. It's like talking to a wall, and nobody is following the word. So you guys using God's name in vain. You should turn to it and read. But homeless first, Americans are first. I'm being attacked by all these people you are letting in our communities, including officers. I would like to get a copy to all of you if you can get that done because I'm not just the last meeting, last meeting, and I'm not going to talk to nobody else. I'm also discriminated because I refuse and will not do online activities. I will not communicate with that, and I don't want none of you sharing or using my communications in that fashion. That's why I feel like I'm being entrapped every time I come to my leader as an American, United States citizen, not being attended to while I'm seeing people rising and being abused by them. My homeless crisis, I've come to everyone from the top to the bottom, from California to here. All your programs have abused me. I got to stay away from harm reduction today for standing up because they talk political and racism. And when I say something, they don't like my combat. But as an American, United States citizen, and a Trumper, and a person that has been a civil person, I am being attacked while you guys to me are doing a lot of treasonous acts with protecting those in the community. I, Mayor, know that you cannot face this alone, but I tried to come tell you today that I saw you that I had just got through dealing with the arrest. I am now in court dealing with criminal cases. My background has been very well from 59 years. It wasn't until I was attacked and going through the crisis in these four years by the immigrants and migrants that I'm being called out of my name, burned, almost dying inside of my surgeries. It's how I became homeless, and all the programs don't fit me, Mayor. Not one of them. They have used my information when I told them the same. I told them I don't have those issues. Don't pull me into the system because to me it's trying to make me become LGBTQ-BTY or whatever that is because I wasn't introduced to that. Drugs, illegals, migrants has my jobs with domestic, and I need statistics. I want to see if the fairness and equality of what America stands for is happening in our neighborhoods because I'm being attacked. I'm 59 years old, Mayor. I've been to school. I have my profile that I tried to share with your people to show my records of elementary to college. Never had this type of reputation, so I've been defamed as an indigenous black woman. So I want help, and I go seek help. In four years, Mayor, I've been abused. And I know I went to the mayor's or the governor's office as well, but none of you, and if we do, go back to his word because all of us has our position in here, we'll have a great world. Please help me.
If you hand that piece of paper to the clerk, she can share it with the council.
And I feel like it's toward all kinds of stuff. I need help. Where's the love for me as a good citizen and an American trying to live normal? Here, baby. Are you able to give it to me, my boy, free? But all that stuff, you guys, is all the stuff, Mayor, and I'm going to get off your time. That's all the resources they keep repeating and giving to me. And that's why I'm going to stay away because they keep trying to break us off when my heart's going down.
Council President, is it time for council comments? Thank you.
All those right here is the digital stuff I got for you guys and have been thinking because I'm hacked. So online is not an option for me. You guys need to have.
Say, President, we need to get on with the meeting. Thank you. Ms. Byrd, this is not a time for dialogue with council members. Thank you very much.
We're 30 minutes out of here.
Please contact our office, Ms. Byrd. Ms. Byrd, thank you very much.
That concludes our public comments.
Thank you, and now we're on to council and liaison comments. Councilmember Bader.
Thanks, Council President. Quickly, here Riverside Neighborhood Met last night, and we had the community transit folks talking about the proposed Swift Gold Line and a very informative presentation, a lot of good feedback from neighborhood members and also afterwards, some good comments as well from Everett Transit staff. Also, let's see, I'd point out that this, let's see, at Pudsey Sound Regional Council Growth Management Board last week, we approved along with other cities' comp plans. We approved Everett's and forwarded it on to the PSRC Executive Board, so that's moving forward. So our work on the comp plan and the work of hard work of so many city staff on that is moving forward, and at least from PSRC's standpoint, I think is almost complete. Finally, I'd point out that on Thursday, September 18th, over at Everett Station, PSRC is hosting a regional transportation plan public meeting from 5:00 to 7:30 and would encourage anyone in our community who's interested. This is for all Snohomish County, by the way, but it's a meeting that'll happen in Snohomish County as they move them around to various locations in Pudsey Sound, but would encourage anyone from our community that's interested in sharing their input on the regional transportation plan to attend that meeting. Of course, they almost certainly can give comment online to PSRC as well, but I think it might be very interesting to go to that meeting as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan.
Great, thank you. Thank you to our public commenters this evening. Earlier this evening, we had our Parks and Built Environment Committee meeting. It was our committee's first look at the manufactured home overlay zone that we had talked about during our comprehensive plan update. And so since it was such a large body of work and we were getting towards the tail end of the comp plan, our planning team's been working on that initiative separately from the comp plan. So we had a chance to look at it this evening and talk through some of the sticking points and decision points. So they're working to identify whether to do a mobile home park overlay or a dedicated mobile home park zone. And so that's one of the main decision points that they're at right now. So where we're at in the process, council provided feedback. Thank you to my fellow committee members, and the team's going to continue to work, reach out to mobile home parks, residents, and other forms of public outreach in the coming months. And then they'll be, including the Planning Commission, then they'll be coming back to our committee in November for a second look and an update. We also had an update and a review of park safety from our parks team. I know that there's been some concerns over the last year with layoffs of our Park Ranger program. So I invited them to join for our meeting so that they could share an update on how things are going. And Deputy Chief Hendrickson joined as well to provide a perspective from EPD's side. Good news is that over the last year, criminal offenses are tracking down at 23% from the previous year, and communities' calls for services are also down 12%. So it's due to a number of different factors, including proactive patrols by our police department, SEPTED improvements at our parks, more activation of our parks so that we can have positive activities going on at the park and a positive presence. And so there were some community concerns, and I think we've all been hearing about gates not being closed at night. But we heard from Deputy Chief that EPD's been doing proactive patrols and bike patrols to help respond to any concerns or anything that might bubble up as a result. Next month, we're going to be revisiting the storefront vacancies work that we've been doing. But I also asked that we include the, I also asked that in that discussion, we include a discussion about big box store vacancies. I think, as we all know, some concerns coming down the pike about Fred Meyer's closing and things that we can do to address any negative outcomes. On Monday, I attended the Port Gardner Neighborhood Association meeting. The big part of the meeting was that representatives from the Port of Everett joined for a discussion about an uptick in noise that's been happening down at the port lately. A lot of that's been coming actually from the domed building that's downtown or down at the port. Don't tell anybody, but I tell my children that macaroni's made there, but cement is actually made there. And so when they've been receiving cement shipments lately, they're due to, the building was built in the 70s, and a lot of their equipment was also from the 70s. So port noise has just escalated quite a bit as a result of that. So the port's been working with the manufacturer to decrease noise. The city's going to be doing a proactive noise measuring in November when the next shipment's received. But if you live in the area and you hear excessive or unusual port noise, they really want to know. So I would encourage people to email portnoise@portovevrit.com or call their hotline, which is 425-388-0269. And either you can speak with somebody or leave a message if it's after hours, and they can investigate the claim. You can also use our Everett Network app to make a complaint and just make sure it's on everybody's radar. Last, I wanted to share that I joined the informational picket line at the Herald to support our local journalists last Thursday. This week, they're in, today, I believe, they're in contract negotiations, and I just wanted to share that I strongly support their reasonable, very reasonable demands, and I think they honestly deserve way more. Last year, over half of the reporters and other staff were either laid off or accepted buyouts, and the remaining staff are faced with unreasonable quotas and compensation. I support our local journalists at the Herald and share my unwavering support for a successful outcome to contract negotiations, especially in this new day where just the act of being a journalist is an act of bravery. Local, accurate, unbiased, objective, thoughtful local journalism is critical for an informed public. And as we have once received in a public comment email, there are no downsides to an informed public. Thank you.
Councilmember Vogel.
Thank you. This weekend on Saturday is the Westmont Holly Neighborhood Association's meeting, and it's from 1:00 to 3:00 at the library, the Evergreen Branch Library. And I will be there. I usually am. But talking specifically about the Fred Meyer closure and what's going on with that, as far as we know. I failed to mention last time that we had an Alliance for Housing Affordability meeting. So that did happen, and that was last week. And we talk a lot, well, we talk a lot about affordable housing, and part of that is continuum of care dollars and federal grants. And so I will read this. "The Continuum of Care Grant for Capital Activities was released on September 5th and has a submission deadline of September 12th. It and all other currently listed HUD grants require compliance with a long list of executive orders that run counter to the core principles of many organizations that use continuum of care, among them Cocoon House, Housing Hope, YWCA, and Catholic Community Services. While this money, again, for capital activities, is not the operations money these organizations rely on, it is an indication of conditions to come with those operations dollars in the near future, as well as the unrealistically small application window of one or two weeks." I just wanted people to be aware that that's happening. And thank you to the public speakers. And in light of all of that, I thought it would be responsible to acknowledge that child rapists should be held accountable in this country. Thank you.
Councilmember Tui.
Oh, yeah, I don't, I don't have a report tonight, but I am asking for an update. I had a couple of people ask me about the COPS grant, and I couldn't remember. I know that at one point, there was a point where we could do an extension on the deadline when that ends. And I, it's been a couple of years, so I'm thinking that we might be close to the end on that. And then what's left to fulfill that?
I think we've filled the positions in the COPS grant. So we've hired all the officers in the COPS grant, so that's it.
So it's over. I mean, it's.
We're still getting funding from it, but that funding over time, you know, goes down. But yeah, we've, we've hired all the officers from that grant.
Great. I'll explain that then. Thank you.
All right, and as for myself, a couple of items. Monday morning, I was part of a event organized by Snohomish County Economic Development and including Economic Alliance Snohomish County. They're hosting a delegation of about 30 visitors from Japan, something called the Chubu Industrial Engineering Association, covering central Japan. As an engineer, this felt like a natural fit for me, but the main aim of the visit was to discuss potential business expansion and investment in our region by these Japanese companies, many of which are affiliated with Toyota and Denso. There's a real potential win-win here. The population in Japan is aging and actually declining, and those companies see opportunity here. We're growing with a growing workforce and a base of skills and experience to build on. Just last week, this body and those who spoke to us were discussing training, apprenticeships, and other workforce development, and we have more to do. And two of the main areas of discussion on this meeting on Monday were workforce development and employee engagement to sustain an innovation culture. I made just a couple of remarks to the group commenting on some aspects of the Japanese corporate work culture, including employment security and training, which can be attractive to our own workforce in this environment of rapid technological change. A fundamental factor in all of this, making Everett and our region attraction for their investment, is our manufacturing economy. Unlike so many other places, this is still a city where we make things, and lots of them, and they're of high added value in manufacturing. So this was indeed a real win-win. And among many speakers, I'll note Mike Fong, Snohomish County Executive Director of Economic Development, and Ray Stephenson, former Everett Mayor and now CEO of Economic Alliance Snohomish County. They and others, I don't have time to name, made a great case for investing here. So I look forward to future developments that way of some large size. Let's see, also yesterday for Everett, I and Government Affairs Director Jennifer Gregerson attended yesterday's Snohomish County Tomorrow and their exploratory committee of that group. We discussed the complexity of building affordable housing. This reflects on what Councilmember Vogel was talking about, including especially collecting the financing, where it's typically from different sources with different timing and restrictions, and along with the role of tax incentives like tax exemptions and tax exempt bonds. In our current environment, it was reported that it's usually impractical to build housing for those at a level of 60% of the median income and below, unless subsidies are involved. And it's important to account for both construction and ongoing operation and maintenance. But a major takeaway was this is often a really lengthy and complex process, and that while Snohomish County Tomorrow, this group that we're part of, can help entities in the county coordinate and align processes for efficiency, and while Everett can and has increased staffing to improve our part of the process, this is still very difficult and expensive and lengthy work. That led to a discussion of the importance of preserving the affordable housing we have, even if it's not as affordable or plentiful as we'd like. There were some explanations and discussion of naturally occurring affordable housing and how it's usually more cost efficient and faster to preserve it rather than to tear down housing and start over. These days, the building costs are just so high and the time delays so lengthy. And that relates then back to co-chairs Ryan and Vogel and today's discussion of the manufactured housing zoning or zoning overlays. That's a way we can preserve a reasonably dense type of housing that also helps serve vulnerable groups like the elderly, disabled, low income, and veterans. So these things kind of all come together, and I hope both, both the long-term prosperity of the further investments in this area and the shorter-term efforts in zoning can help, can help ease this housing. And that's it for me. Now on to administration. Director Gregerson.
No report tonight.
All right, and to our city attorney, David Hall.
Two quick things. First, I will take up Mr. Peoples' suggestion and condemn the political assassination that occurred today. I would hope that is uncontroversial, even for an unelected official like me to say. And second, I will give you a brief update on the District Four eligibility controversy. As you know, there was a hearing Monday morning in front of the auditor. That decision has not come out yet, but more importantly, there was a hearing yesterday afternoon in front of Judge Oakrent in Superior Court. He heard about an hour of testimony from both of the parties and a little bit from the city. As you recall, the city has not participated for purposes of favoring one party or the other. Our participation was strictly to ensure an orderly process and assist in making sure that the decision was made in accordance with state law and the city charter so that our residents can have confidence in the electoral process. The judge ruled that Mr. Battle is not eligible to appear on the ballot. Those ballots, I believe, are being printed today and will go out without his name. I think that it was a very reasoned decision by the judge. That's all I have, and there's no executive session.
Thank you. And now we're on to our consent items. We have five consent items. Do I have a motion to pass these consent items?
So move the consent items.
Second.
All right, with a motion and a second, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Sarlenko.
Yes. And now on to our proposed action items. Our first two items have been read into the record. Final readings will take place on September 17th, 2025, a week from today. The two items were adopting an ordinance creating a special improvement project entitled River Point Outfalls Replacement. And the other was adopt an ordinance approving the appropriations of the revised, 2025 revised city of Everett budget and amending ordinance number 4099-25. That's our budget amendment. Do we have any council comments or questions on either of those two measures? Okay, those are second readings. Now I'll read our next proposed action item into the record. This is Council Bill 2508-48, the first reading. Adopt an ordinance creating a special improvement project entitled North Broadway Pedestrian Bridge. That's Fund 303, Program 133, to accumulate all costs for the improvement. And of course, are there any comments or questions on this? Councilmember Ryan.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to call attention to that this project originally, when Move Ahead Washington was originally passed, this project was down towards the bottom of the list for completion. And I think they were even considering starting it in like 2036 or something along those lines. So this is, this is really phenomenal that we, our team has been able to work with the state legislature to move it up on the list and have it come, get started this early in the process. First of all, it saves a ton of money because we're not paying for it 10 years from now, and it's going to be a huge difference for North Everett. So I just, I wanted to call attention to that because I think it's, I'm thrilled to see that it's already here, which we can't always say for government projects, so thank you.
You're welcome, and I think that if I understand it correctly, that's in the region of Everett Community College and WSU Everett. Right. Okay, with no other comments or questions on that, we'll move on to a briefing. Briefing on Vision Zero Everett, and I think we have Corey Hurt with us this evening. Briefing on Vision Zero Everett, and I think we have Corey Hurt with us this evening.
All right, thank you, Council Vice President Zarlingo. And good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to brief you about Vision Zero Everett and our draft plan. It's our comprehensive safety action plan to reduce and eliminate serious injury and fatal crashes on our transportation system by the year 2050. I'm Corey Hurt, City Traffic Engineer. This evening, with the help of our consultant team, we'll provide a short briefing on our draft Vision Zero Everett Plan. I feel the plan that, it's a plan that represents the values of our community. The people of Everett work hard and they deserve to get where they need to go on our transportation system, whether it's to work, to school, or just to walk down to the grocery store. Vision Zero Everett lays out a long-range plan that's also a continuous improvement plan. And it will be, and it will involve the public, working to inform and educate everyone in Everett about the importance of traffic safety, seek input from their shared experiences and solutions, and create a safety culture where responsibility is shared. In January, this council passed a resolution of commitment prioritizing safety measures across the entire transportation system with the ultimate goal of eliminating all traffic fatalities and serious injuries. For that support, I thank you. As we wrap up this briefing, I won't be asking for any specific action today, but I hope that you'll take the time to review the plan in detail and provide your valuable input during the upcoming comment period. I think you've seen some version of this slide before. Whether it's Everett or Washington State or nationwide, the number of serious injury crashes has increased over the past four years, while the number of overall crashes in Everett falls or kind of stays the same. Between 2019 and 2024, Everett Street saw 65 deaths and 342 serious injuries. These crashes have risen since 2019, peaking in 2021. While there's been some decline since, the annual numbers of traffic-related fatalities and serious injuries are still at historical high levels. It's time to work together to reverse this trend. So one of the things that we, we noticed when we started looking at all of the crash data is, was what was most significant, and I just wanted to talk about that for a second. When it comes to crashes and what type of crashes are involved, 31% of all of the serious injury and fatal crashes are active transportation crashes. However, over 50% are fatal, of our fatal crashes are active transportation crashes. That's pedestrians and bicycles. 16% are angle crashes at intersections, and 13% are left-turn crashes at intersections. Prior to issuing the draft Vision Zero Plan, we started with a safety analysis. We analyzed not just the serious injuries and fatalities over the past five years, but also looked at 9,500 reported crashes that occurred during the same time. We engaged the public to seek the corridors and locations that they felt needed the most attention. From all the data, we developed a safety strategy and countermeasures, and they set our priorities, our five commitments to reduce the most serious crashes. So for an introduction of our draft plan, I'd like to introduce Alyssa Blackman, Safety Engineer, and Brent Crowther, Project Manager, both of Kimley Horn, who will help me brief you on this plan.
Thank you, Corey. So as we look at the Vision Zero Plan, this map here shows just the key highlights that we've accomplished along the way. So the project was initiated about mid, mid 2024. Since then, we've had three in-person workshops with an advisory team gathering input, really steering us towards what is the best blueprint for Everett. We, tomorrow, we'll have our workshop number four, where we're going to introduce to them this draft Vision Zero Plan. After the workshop tomorrow, we will have a public engagement session open for about four weeks. We'll take all the information we get from the public and then finalize our plan in November of this year. Throughout the process, in our safety analysis, we developed what we called a high-risk network. Our high-risk network shows where those serious injury crashes and high frequency of crashes is happening. From that map, we pulled 16 locations comprising of 12 segments and four intersections, and we're calling those our high-priority locations. These locations through public engagement and the analysis itself prove to be the ones with the most need for safety improvements. And like Corey mentioned, we did do a series of public engagement events. Some of those were online tools, the first one being the online interactive mapping tool, which allows users to go in and leave a comment or question or concern about safety issues that they see in their community. There was also an online survey where those were able to tell us about the mode of transportation that they would prefer to use and what safety issues were the largest concern to them. We met with community or went to community gatherings, meeting with lots of partners around the community just to get them awareness about this Vision Zero Plan and how they can be part of it and get others around them involved. We attended eight neighborhood association meetings. Those eight neighborhoods were identified by that high-risk network. Just getting input from them on what's important to you. Do these locations make sense to you? Is there something that we're missing? Really getting that holistic approach. And then lastly, we have a multilingual mailer that is going to be sent out later this week. So everyone within the City of Everett will receive this mailer saying, hey, our draft plan is live. We would love to hear from you. Please leave questions or comments as we finalize this plan in November, and we'll get that incorporated in. And as we did our public engagement, we had three big takeaways that we kept hearing. Those three themes were safety concerns for people walking and rolling, speeding, and a need for increased enforcement. We use these key themes that we heard from our residents in Everett to kind of shape the countermeasures that we're developing. And on the screen there, you can see some of the quotes that we got directly left on our public engagement tools.
Now I get to tell you some of the recommendations that are reflected in the Vision Zero Plan. Plan recommendations are based around what we call the safe system approach. The safe system approach is a strategy to eliminate traffic deaths and serious injuries by designing roads that anticipate human mistakes and reduce crash severity. It's built on five pillars: safe roads, safe speeds, safe vehicles, safe road users, and post-crash care, and shifts responsibility from a specific individual to the entire transportation system. It recognizes that we all have a role in reducing fatalities and serious injuries. The Vision Zero Everett recommendations are organized into three categories. First are engineering-focused recommendations. Those are our capital improvements. Second are the non-infrastructure. Those are plans and policies. And third, we have a set of what we call systemic countermeasures. Systemic countermeasures are proactive safety solutions applied across the transportation network, not just at specific locations where, with a history of crashes. They're based on patterns and risk factors identified through our daily analysis and aim to prevent crashes before they occur. Examples include adding lighting, improving signage, reducing speeds, and enhancing pedestrian crossings in areas with similar risk profiles. This approach helps us to prevent, prevent crashes more, more equitably, more proactively, and more efficiently. The Vision Zero Everett engineering strategies are focused on each, on 16 high-priority locations that were identified in our, in our high-injury network and in our priority locations network. We prepared project information sheets for each of the 16 locations. The project information sheets first identify why that location was selected. It's second, it provides a summary of the, the safety data at that location. And then we have a description of the recommended strategy and countermeasure along with a cost estimate. The next slide shows an example of what those project information sheets look like. This is a little small. We don't expect you to read this, but you can read, read it in the report. The, we have an exhibit for each of these locations. The orange represents, for example, a raised median to demonstrate the safety improvements of raised medians. We have other countermeasures, including signalized pedestrian crossings, bulb-outs, enhanced pedestrian crossings, et cetera. As it relates to the non-infrastructure strategies, we have those documented in three different technical memorandums. Technical memorandum number 3A focuses on strategies and solutions that complement the engineering strategies that, that I just reviewed with you. It reviews existing plans and policies and identifies opportunities to improve processes and policies and highlights noteworthy practices where policies can prioritize safety. Technical memorandum number 3B is our complete streets checklist. It provides Everett with guidelines and recommendations to improve the existing complete streets checklist by standardizing the evaluations and identifying gaps and enhancing transparency in the process. And technical number 3C establishes a procedure to set posted speed limits based on a system that involves collecting both operating speed data and integrating roadway context information to generate the speed limit recommendations. The systemic countermeasures are organized around our, our top three crash types within Everett. As Corey mentioned, active transportation, most, most of those are pedestrians. And then we have intersection-related, and those involve speeding. We have both engineering-focused countermeasures and non-infrastructure recommendations to address those top three crash, crash types. And we have a menu of potential options and solutions. And again, those relate to enhanced pedestrian crossing, raised medians, speed management, and there are many others in that, in that section. And then we conclude with five key recommendations. We're calling Everett's Five Commitments. First is prioritize people walking and rolling. People walking and rolling includes pedestrians and those using mobility devices. They are the most vulnerable road users in Everett and must be prioritized. Walking is often the first and last leg of any journey, whether you're walking to, to school, to a bus, to work. Designing for pedestrians leads to safer, healthier, and more vibrant communities. The City of Everett can create a safer and more inclusive environment for people walking and rolling by adopting pedestrian-friendly practices. Examples of these actions: adopt a pedestrian hierarchy, which prioritizes pedestrian safety when designing streets and urban spaces, placing it above other modes of transportation. Second is foster a safety-first community. This engages members of the Everett community to embrace a community-focused mindset that prioritizes safety through education, engagement, and shared responsibility. Examples could be developing and launching education campaigns with consistent and clear messages, or partnering with schools, employers, and organizations and businesses to promote safe driving habits, such as not distracted driving yielding to pedestrians and not speeding or driving under the influence. The next is strengthen partnerships among law enforcement and, and engineering. We already have strong partnerships with our engineering and law enforcement. We can leverage the resources of each to improve, improve safety by focusing on high-priority areas, coordinating data and historical statistics. Examples is focusing efforts on locations where speeding, distracted driving, and pedestrian violations are identified through our plan, and focusing efforts on the high-risk network identified in partnership with engineers and planners. The next is adopting Vision Zero practices and policies that allows Everett to implement long-lasting institutional changes to achieve Vision Zero Everett. Examples including embedding the goals into citywide plans and policies, including comprehensive plans, transportation plans, et cetera. Adopting a speed management plan and requiring speed, requiring safety impact assessments for major projects. And lastly is building Vision Zero infrastructure. Investing in the infrastructure prioritizes safety of all road users in the Everett community. Examples of these recommendations: plan, design, and construct the improvements as we, as recommended in the 16 high-priority locations. Applying a complete streets approach to all capital projects, integrating speed management principles into planning and design, and coordinating with Washington State and Snoomish County to plan, design, and construct safe improvements at jurisdictional boundaries.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Brent. So where do we go from here? So tomorrow afternoon, we have our final workshop for Vision Zero, our advisory team. And the plan will be presented in more detail and comments sought from our community stakeholders and members from fire, police, and other city staff. Tonight's presentation kicks off Phase Two of community engagement from mid-September to mid-October. As you can imagine, this presentation is an incredibly high-level look at the Vision Zero Everett Plan, which is about 47, 47 pages, and in its draft form is a fairly easy read. Tonight, after the council meeting, we'll be publishing the plan for public view on the Vision Zero Everett website, where we will ask for everyone's feedback, and I do mean everyone. Postcards went out today to every address in Everett with a way for residents can view the plan, comment on a map, or just make general statement in a short survey. We're also publishing all the technical documents and recommendations, like the speed management policy, a crosswalk marking policy, and other recommended strategies for both infrastructure and non-infrastructure improvements. When the document is completed in November, there'll be a dashboard where we can measure our progress towards our vision of fewer serious injury and fatal crashes. This concludes our quick overview and happy to take any questions that we might have.
All right, from the council here, any questions? Councilmember Vogli.
I'm very excited about this, and I've been, that's not my point. This is all really good information, and I'm curious. A big thing that's on my mind right now is the fatalities that have happened very recently. And, and it's super sad, and it's obviously not going, I mean, we're, it's not going towards the zero because it's just added like three. But how do the most recent fatalities enter into the information that we receive tonight, or how will it enter into the future?
Well, certainly, we're going to have a dashboard where we'll be tracking crashes that happen, probably updated quarterly. And so we'll be able to evaluate, you know, where we're at, if things are increasing or decreasing in a certain crash type, whether it be intersections or pedestrians or bicycles. And we can place additional emphasis on that with either, you know, enforcement. It'll be engineering's job to keep an eye on, on the data and share it with all of the different parts, you know, of, of the equation. I mean, it's, it's going to be a team effort, for sure.
And I know that y'all are working super hard on it. It's just, yeah. It's weird seeing the orange lines of how fast, you know, how the cars interacted with the road and the sidewalks and the buildings that they eventually crash into. So I just, it's so sad, and I'm so glad we're working on it. So thank you. And everybody else out there, make sure you open your emails and go to the website and the in-live person, in-person live places to leave your feedback and comments. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Tui.
Yeah, well, I'm really happy to see this work. You know, we hear a lot constantly complaints about speeding, traffic, and street safety. And we just, we're talking about the policy for setting posted limits, speed limits throughout town and making some possible changes there. So, you know, this is all part of the big plan. I'm sure these are all many parts that will work on this, and I'm really excited to, to see this come, come forward. So thank you so much.
Thank you, councilmember.
Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. Can you, I'm sorry, can you remind me what the workshop tomorrow is about and who, who can join?
So the, the workshop includes members from the community, from our community partners, but also staff members, members of the biking community. So we have put together a team that's been pretty consistent throughout, that's been providing, providing guidance on that. However, we could certainly have quite a few more in the room. So if you have interested parties, please see me.
I shouldn't invite the general public, is what I'm hearing.
No, it's, it's not open to the general public at this point. But we will have plenty of ways the public can comment on the plan and make their feelings known.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Bader.
Thanks, Council President. Thanks for the good information and the work behind this. First of all, one clarification on, I think it was Slide Two, the fatalities and in serious injuries. That doesn't count anything that happened on I-5 or SR-526, correct?
Yes, good point. Thank you, Councilmember Bader. Yes, we, all of our crash data was pulled from. Um, yes, we, all of our crash data was pulled from city streets. It doesn't include highways that are fully under the control of State Department of Transportation. That includes I-5, Highway 526, and Highway 529 north of the Snoomish River. But it does include roadways like Highway 99, Evergreen Way, and, you know, Highway 527, 19th Avenue Southeast. Those are all included.
Great. Um, as, as you go through this and people come to these workshops, et cetera, do you provide information in regard to these fatalities and injury accidents that you cite? Provide data for how many of those, in those accidents, was the motorist cited? How many, and of those, how many of those was motorist under the influence? Or was driving without a license or driving distracted? Do you provide that data to the participants?
Yes, we do. That information is all available in our technical memorandum and, and in the report. So yeah, if you have a question about, not necessarily who was cited, but what the contributing circumstance of the crash was, we absolutely have that information in there.
Got you, good. And obviously, how many, but where speed was the sole contributing factor to either one of these fatalities or serious injury accidents, I assume, would show up in that data?
Yes, it does.
How do we deal with the fact that many of the, probably the most helpful items that we could do to provide safety for pedestrians or bicycles are probably the most expensive? Sidewalks, maybe pedestrian bridges, separated bicycle routes. Um, you know, as, as you know, we have very little money for any of those. We depend on grant money, I think, for almost exclusively for any of that. Um, I, I'm just afraid that we talk about doing all these good things, but the reality is that we're years, decades away from, I mean, I've lived my whole life thinking we'd get sidewalks on South Broadway between 41st and, and I'm now in my 60s, and still we have no sidewalks there. Um, how do we help condition participants, our constituents, that a lot of these, maybe the most important things are, are, are hard to do and might not happen for years?
Uh, that's another really good point. Um, it is an incremental plan, and the need always, you know, out, outstrips the available funding. So I think we need to be honest with our constituents that this is a plan, and it's a long-range plan. Um, like any long-range plan, it's going to take time. We will seek every available funding source that we can. And, um, you know, I, I think this plan allows us to apply for more Safe Streets for All funding next year for projects up to $5 million. So we'll definitely be applying for those under the next grant cycle, and, and we're always looking for, for ways to, to leverage our grant funds.
Good, good. And then one last question, kind of a follow-on from our approval a week or two ago of the lower speed limits on 16th and 100th. I think, you know, I questioned whether or not that would have an effect on those extreme outliers of people that are already going 40 or 50 on a 30. Um, and I think you said there was some study that showed that lowering the speeds did have an effect on those. So I'd still like to see that data that shows that lowering the speed limit does have an effect on, and what kind of effect it has on those already very extreme drivers that are significantly exceeding speeds where it's 30 or 35 right now. So be grateful for that.
Certainly, I'd be happy to dig that up and get that to you.
All right, thank you. Any more questions here? Sure. Councilmember Ogley?
It's just funny. Uh, so I was going home after we did the resolution for lowering the speeds on Holly, right? And I hadn't even had a chance to like tell anybody about it. And my husband's like, did you know that it's 25 on Holly now? Like, well, I thought it would be in a couple days, but yeah. So good job on the quickness of getting the signs up and telling everybody people noticed.
Yeah, I certainly will comment that that got wider coverage than I thought it would. I, I had, if there are no other comment, questions, I had two things. One of them is with respect to rolling. Uh, there's been a fair amount of rapid technological innovation in the recent years, mostly in batteries and motors. So we now have a lot more electric bicycles, one-wheels, scooters of various kinds. I saw on Highway 527 near I-5 the other day, a couple, a pair of electric bicycles, not really electric motorcycles, going their full 20-some miles per hour right in the middle of the traffic lane. So I see a kind of a rapid evolution that way, often without helmets, sadly. Um, and I'm wondering, do we track, when we say it's a bicycle, or it's a, or it's a roller, do we track what those are and how it's changing? Are we going to be able to learn something from that and maybe what we want to do differently?
That's a good question. I, I think that, um, right now, the way the police report is set up, that it classifies the vehicle under, under certain categories. I can track those down. I'm not sure exactly what they are, but I don't think it distinguishes a bicycle from an e-bike at this point. But I may be incorrect about that. I'd be happy to look into that.
Yeah, it's a tricky one because the e-bikes are getting quick enough. I mean, not just speed, but just acceleration. They're powerful enough that they're close to electric motorcycles. And so I'm not sure. That mix may change what we, what's optimal for us in terms of protecting rollers. Um, and then the other question, and I got this from, from some constituents who've seen these graphs of, of, of injuries and fatalities. Is there, is there a short, likely accurate answer about why things got so bad after 2019?
We, we know, we did see a big spike after COVID as well. Um, some of the theories of, but forth, when you saw a decrease in traffic volumes during COVID. And so the, the roadways were, were less congested, they were wider open, and people picked up speed. Um, and they haven't reduced the speeds since. They got into bad habits of speeding on the wider open roads. Now we have more traffic combined with the speeds, and that's led to that elevated, elevated state. But there's, it's no single, uh, so, or no single cause, but that's one that's been postulated. I think we also recognize, uh, distracted driving with the preponderance of cell phones and things like that continue to be an issue. Um, I think we're making a lot of advancements in vehicle safety with that regard too. So hopefully, as, as those become more prevalent in, uh, implementation and, and into vehicles, we can see a lot of benefit from that. But I think it does, a lot of it does come down to people making safe choices when they are driving, driving at appropriate speed limits for the context is, is probably the biggest indicator of, of, particularly when it comes to vulnerable road users and, and conflicts with pedestrians.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anything else, Corey?
That's it. Thank you, councilmember.
You're welcome. Thank you for the presentation. Thanks for the enlightenment. We look forward to hearing more about this. I know the technological evolution is going to happen pretty rapidly. So we'll be doing our best to keep up and then figure out what we need to do in terms of specific actions. Uh, all right, well then, with no executive session and no further items on our agenda, this meeting is adjourned.